Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Oh, are we missing? We have everyone.
Yep.
Okay, great. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in preparation of the council meeting notice dated May 27, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire races are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could we have roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naidu?
Here.
Ms. O’Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Barton?
Present.
President Fox?
Here.
Okay, and now if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Summit YouTube channel and Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV, Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk’s Office at R-Licatis@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular closed session for October 5th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, and now we’re on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. I have some Halloween-related information to mention. The Summit Police Department is sharing a video with Halloween safety tips. You can view it on the City of Summit YouTube channel or on the Summit Police Facebook page. Trick-or-treating in the downtown is on Friday, October 29th, from 2:30 to 4:00 p.m. The annual Halloween parade is this Saturday, October 23rd. If you would like to participate, please line up at 25 to Forest at 2:45 p.m. and depart for the Village Green at 3:00 p.m. Winners of the costume contest will be announced at 4:15. There will be music and games until 5:00 p.m. I hope to see you there. I will be there with my three-year-old granddaughter. The groundbreaking for the new firehouse is scheduled for Thursday, October 28th, at 10:00 a.m. I am very, very happy to make this announcement. I hope you will join me, members of council, and the Summit Fire Department and Police Department and other fire departments in our area with whom they have mutual aid to get going on this project. Plans for this building project took years to complete, and it is exciting for us to finally begin work on the new headquarters. If you are unable to attend, the ceremony will be recorded on Facebook Live and shared on the City of Summit YouTube channel. Thank you. And I want to thank personally Chief Evers, who has been stewarding this project for many years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, and now on to Michael Rogers for the City Administrator’s report.
Thank you, Council President. Just one updated reminder. The deadline for residents to renew annual parking permits or permits for parking and the transfer station has been extended to November 15th. New permits will be valid from November 1st, 2021, through October 31st, 2022. Please go to cityofsummit.org/parking to renew permits online. If you require assistance or do not have Internet access, email parking@cityofsummit.org or call 908-522-5100 to make an in-person appointment. And that’s all I have for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. And I had two items on the Council President’s report. First is the next Summit Free Market is Saturday, November 13th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Adult volunteers are needed to staff the event. If you’re interested, please email pressoffice@cityofsummit.org to find out more information or to volunteer. Early voting for the November 2 election begins this Saturday, October 23rd, and continues through Sunday, October 31st. The hours are Monday to Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. You can visit Union County Votes to find a voting location. Our closest location for early voting is in New Providence at the Municipal Building on 360 Elwood Avenue, and no appointment is necessary. We also have, if you’re voting by mail, we have the Dropbox in the Chestnut Street Lot if you want to use that instead of the mail. That’s probably not a bad idea. And with that, that’s all we have for reports, and we’re now on to public comments. At this point in the meeting, members of the public have an opportunity to comment on any matter that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to step up and make a comment? Please state your name, address, and if you have a prepared statement, please give it to the clerk. And we’ll take all the comments and then we’ll address them all at once.
Happy to break the ice this evening. Good evening. My name is Steve Spur. I reside at 61 Woodland Avenue here in Summit. Through you, Council President, I would like to extend my thanks to Mayor Radus for sharing an update on Broad Street West redevelopment progress this past Thursday. In that letter, the mayor expressed her gratitude to, quote, “Everyone who has participated in this process so far, either by attending one of the three public community workshops, small group discussions, or by emailing, texting, or participating in a survey over the past seven years,” end quote. She continues later in the letter to acknowledge the specific input of, quote, “Members of the Environmental Commission, Historic Preservation Committee, Summit Housing Authority, YMCA, Summit Free Public Library Board, Summit Downtown, Inc., and other local business owners,” end quote. I’m here tonight to acknowledge these efforts to solicit public input on this transformative downtown redevelopment project, especially as critical design and financial decisions grow near. I am, however, concerned that we’re not doing enough to lay the foundation for a sustained, informed, and constructive community conversation, as plans inevitably evolve and the public does not literally have a seat at the negotiating table. In that spirit, I have three questions tonight that I hope you can answer. First, where can the public review either a summary or, better yet, any verbatim comments on Broad Street West redevelopment provided by the Environmental Commission, Historic Preservation Committee, Summit Housing Authority, YMCA, Summit Free Public Library Board, Summit Downtown, Inc., and other local business owners already consulted? I’ve already sought some of those comments personally, specifically the Historic Preservation Commission’s review, though a recent Oprah request that I submitted was denied. Secondly, can you confirm if a pilot is being contemplated for Sub District 3 or any component of the holistic Broad Street West redevelopment project? Topology alluded to payment in lieu of taxes or pilot agreements in their May 20th, 2021 presentation, and Councilman Naidu did the same in his June 11th, 2021, letter to the editor entitled Status Report Number 11, Broad Street West Update. In the interest of the public educating themselves on these special tax arrangements, which typically are designed to save a commercial developer real estate taxes and by doing so increase the fair market value of property as a result of higher net operating revenue, acknowledgement of at least of a pilot at this point would be helpful. And then third, when will the next public meeting on Broad Street West redevelopment be held? It’s my belief that even after seven years, it’s not too late to adopt a process of community input around Broad Street West redevelopment that welcomes a diversity of perspectives and is capable of respectfully reconciling reasonable disagreement. I’m afraid that we’re not on that path right now, but I’m hopeful your answers to these three questions tonight will be a start. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I’ll give you a pop resume via email.
Does anyone else have a comment to make? Okay, so I’m going to close the — oh.
Sorry.
Yep, come on up.
Madam Clerk, well, gentleman’s coming up. I do have one that we received by email.
Right, we’ll do that after we take the live ones. Yep, okay.
Final will be brief. Thank you, Council President Fox. Excuse me.
You’re welcome.
David Fosgay, 32 Laurel Avenue. I apologize for asking this question prematurely back on September 1st regarding the gas-powered leaf blower pilot program. Obviously, it just ended the day before. There wasn’t a lot to know there for then. But now that we’re a month removed from that, and I read recently and tapped into Summit that the committee studying this or council itself is now compiling data that they learned from or pulled out of the pilot program, I’m just curious as to what that data is or just examples thereof. I mean, what are we learning besides, you know, public input itself in terms of metrics, studies, anything that was performed during that three-month period, just to enlighten us as to, you know, what the end result might look like or, you know, again, what the outcome might be?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, and so, and does anyone else have a comment? If not, I’m going to close the comment period, and then you’re going to read the in-person one. But yes, okay, that’s it.
Can I just ask? I just had a comment on the sidewalk issue up to the arboretum. Is that covered in the agenda? Should I —
That’s on the agenda, so we’ll let you know when we’re there. Okay.
Okay, Council President, there was one email received for public comment this evening from Anna Perdett, and I believe she’s on Morris Avenue here in Summit, and her email reads as follows. It has been over a month and a half since the most engaging issue and ordinance in Summit has come to an end. I believe this is an issue that widely affects voters’ stance for the election coming up in less than a month. From the start, there were many questions regarding the metrics and how the success of this ban will be measured. To date, the only data or information I have personally seen regarding this is from private residents submitting Oprah requests and releasing. This information revealed that the City of Summit exempted its own contracted companies from abiding by disordinance for certain projects. I think this speaks volumes, and I urge the ad hoc committee appointed to this issue to release their statement and collected data regarding metrics and success as soon as possible. Is there a timeline for this? Many council members and candidates have said that they cannot comment on this issue, and their support of it is in the future as they are waiting for the data from said committees. And that’s it.
So now we’ll officially close this public comment period. Okay, and so since we have two on the leaf blowers, let’s just get those out of the way first. So, Mr. Schreger, could I ask you to step up and talk about what the Capitol Projects and Community Services Committee is doing on this topic, please?
Absolutely, through you, Council President. There is, so the program ran from June 1st to August 31st. Very important to point out, it was a pilot program, so it was really just a pilot to test how the program would work. There would be some kinks and flaws we had to work through, which we did rather well. So, but just some data we do have in regards to the reports that we followed up on specifically would be, you know, Department of Community Services did respond to 101, I’ll call them issues because they weren’t all phone calls, they weren’t all emails or even work orders, it was just various, and some was just what our inspectors witnessed on the road themselves. So there was 101, you know, instances that they did respond to a report of gas-powered leaf blowers during the ban. 93 of those were proactive, that we actually, you know, found the people, it wasn’t reported to us, eight weren’t, and that’s of approximately 1,600 work orders that we got during that timeframe.
For all topics.
For all topics, so just to kind of point that out and share that. Furthermore, for the total, police also had 58 that they responded to during that time, which, you know, they have estimated approximately 12,000 calls they received during that time. And all told, what it resulted in was four first-defense warnings. The ordinance was worded that it was a first offense, was actually the first warning was the first offense, then followed by fine. Only one then did go to the next level, which was a $100 fine. So it was one fine and four formal warnings that were issued during the time. We did receive, I believe, I apologize, don’t have it with me, was 16 waiver requests. We did try to work with other contractors, knowing it was a short-term ban on the leaf blowers, and 12 were approved. We did approve some of our contractors, but specifically they were not landscape-specific contractors. One, for example, was, community programs did resurface their track. It’s not equipment they had readily available, it’s not something they were aware of when they bid the project earlier, so we felt that was warranted, and one was just a roadway project where, again, they bid it before the ban was in effect, so we did work with them. That pretty much sums up what we have in terms of that. We did a proactive campaign where we did go flyering, we did speak to landscapers as we saw them, we left stuff on doors that we might have received a call that there may have been a leaf blower there, but if we didn’t find it, we would leave a door hanger. So, that’s the summary.
And what is the, and let me just clarify this. This is not the ad hoc committee that’s doing this now, it’s the Capitol Projects Committee that’s doing this next step of evaluations, correct?
Correct. The committee, the ad hoc committee hasn’t convened since the end of the year.
Because we were just using them for their expertise, now it’s a matter of figuring out how the process worked, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So are there any questions that anyone else has for Mr. Schreger? I think.
Yes, through you, Council President. I just wanted to clarify, was it 12,000 total calls or 1,200?
12,000 total calls for the police. It’s an approximate, it’s just during that timeframe, that’s what they averaged.
For gas leaf blowers or just in general?
In general, overall, called on.
I think what Mr. Schreger is trying to do is give some context, that there were 58 calls over a 12,000 call. Over the same period, there were 12,000 total calls, so it’s not a huge jump in volume caused by this project.
Okay, just one last clarification, through you, Council President. 1,600 work orders, I didn’t know what that meant.
So, we don’t have a CAD system like the police do, so we don’t have a means to log everything that comes into us. 1,600 really includes what goes into our See Click Fix work order system, but those itself could be, employee receives the call and enters it in. So it is a call, but it counts as one of those 1,600. A resident or anyone in town could have gone on to See Click Fix by themselves and entered it in that way. An employee could have been out, seen it, and entered it themselves, so it’s just what we have physically recorded. There could have been phone calls that we don’t have logged in, that might have been just a quick question about it, but we get those all day long for all sorts of things within the community services purview.
Can I?
Yes.
Just to follow up on Councilwoman Allen, because I want to make sure that we all understand what you’re saying, because I think we’re getting a little lost here. So, you had, there’s two departments that could have received calls. One is your department, and the other is the police department, correct?
Correct.
So let’s do the police department first. The police department received, you said, 58 calls with regard to gas-powered leaf blowers out of approximately 12,000 calls.
That is correct, yes.
Right? So that translates, if I’m doing my math correctly, to a point 0.4% of the calls associated with the police department or associated with gas-powered leaf blowers. The significance of this is, of course, that there were some people who were concerned that there would be a drain on police resources if there was a gas-powered leaf blower ban. And this gives some perspective to those folks to understand how much of police resources was taken, which is .04%.
0.04.
.004?
Yeah.
Okay, well then, I stand corrected. Somebody did the math better than I did.
Through you, Council President. I had a calculator.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barton. Then the second, then the second piece is your department, which is, you received during that same period, three-month period of time, approximately 1,600 total calls for all issues related to the City of Summit, correct?
Correct.
And of that, 101 approximately calls were associated with gas-powered leaf blowers, some of which that were initiated by the department personnel themselves seeing the gas-powered leaf blower issue, or alternatively having residents call in, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you take the 101 out of approximately 1,600, I’ll say it’s about 6%, maybe Councilwoman Barton says my numbers, my percentages are wrong, but I think that’s probably correct, around 6%. Again, this was in order to give context to the fact that some people thought that this would be an overwhelming impact on your department, and this helps to give people some sense of how much of resource allocation was associated with this project, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so the last question I have is what are the next steps? Where are you going from here?
Next would be to take the data back to the Committee Capitol Projects Committee, and that would be to assess what we have and to see if that, you know, warrants that we then convene the ad hoc committee, the committees expanded, and then just to take a look moving forward, so.
Okay, thanks for, thank you for that. I think that’s, I think that’s all we got. Yep. And then we had Mr. Spur’s question. A lot of the comments that were provided that the mayor referenced in her letter were oral comments, they were meetings, they were sit downs, you know, amongst groups of us talking to the different players involved. I don’t know, I have not seen any notes that have become available on that. It was, you know, it was information for us to kind of learn what people’s concerns and thoughts were. As far as your request for Historic Preservation Committee, that is a document, there was a document that you apparently know about that was, and I understand that you may even, Mr. Spur, have access to that document already, but that was a document that should not have been released because it was a pre-decisional document, and our lawyer, I’m going to turn it over to Matt Jacovi to explain this, but it’s, this had to do with the Historic Preservation Commission, which is a volunteer commission, which, that part is true, but it’s also an arm of city government, and it’s like the zoning board, it’s like the Environmental Commission. All of these commissions are part of the city, and when we ask them to advise us on something, it’s not public in the same way. It’s, you know, we are seeking advice from these entities, and so I’ll turn it over to Mr. Jacovi to explain the privilege issue and why.
Yeah, under the Open Public Records Act, there are documents that are protected from disclosure, attorney-client privilege communications, personnel, and one of them is pre-decisional or deliberative process. And so, as you know, the building hasn’t commenced yet, the development hasn’t gone, and the governing body, the council, the professors are seeking input from various entities, and those are all pre-decisional deliberative process documents, and that’s why it’s not disclosed, it will not be disclosed under the Open Public Records Act. The Open Public Records Act, if a decision has been made, the council votes on something, and there’s a document related to that, that’s no longer a deliberative process because the decision has been made. So it’s our legal opinion that that document should not be released, and it also involves, there’s going to be negotiations that go on with the developer, a whole host of things that come into play, and that’s why this is pre-decisional and should not be released at this time, and will not be released at this time.
Thank you. And I think, you know, Mr. Spur, if anyone, you know, anyone who’s in the audience who’s negotiated an agreement, you know, you never want to tip your hand by giving the other side some idea of what it is you’re considering and what all the issues are. So, you know, it’s in the city’s best interest to allow us to negotiate with this information.
I just want to say one other thing, just to answer the questions, is you had a lot of community meetings dealing with the redevelopment where the public was invited to have input, not only before this body, but you guys went out and did kind of like the road shows, and you also had it before the planning board.
Correct.
So those are all noticed meetings publicly, and members of the public did avail themselves of that, and those comments that were part of the record before those bodies were noted and taken into consideration.
Right.
So, you had, I mean, you had topology come here, you had the planner come here and give presentations several occasions, and I know they did the same thing at the planning board. So all that goes into the mix, along with members of the public and the input, and the input from planning board members, et cetera. That’s all part of this dialogue that’s helped forming this, you know, this overall concept. You also had discussions dealing with Seven Seater, we dealt with that a couple years ago, the firehouse and the relocation of the firehouse. So all this has been done publicly at public meetings, either here or at the planning board or both, so that members of the public could participate.
In addition to several public meetings that we had, you know, at the Y, at the Connection.
Dedicated.
Yes, dedicated public meetings at the Connection at St. Teresa’s, you know, to get public input.
Right, well, that was early on. That’s Master Plan, that’s what started.
Yes, of course. So, yeah, so that’s, so I mean, I think there is a long history of public involvement. We are now just at a point where we’re negotiating with the redevelopers, and that’s not a point where we can share further information. You know, what we’ve shared with you is what we can share with you until we reach some terms. So, in answer to the second question, a pilot is being contemplated, and that’s, your explanation of a pilot was partially right, but the, it is a payment in lieu of taxes, but there’s an advantage to both sides to have a pilot, and when, you know, because we also, if we do go with a pilot, the city, not only does it save the developers money, it will also bring more money into the city, rather than the taxes being split where we get only 20%. So there are advantages from a revenue perspective for the city as well. When we get to the point where we are ready to present the terms, we will, if the pilot is the direction we go, we will have a financial panelist who’s been working with us, who will present and explain the pilot and explain the benefits and, you know, and why this is the best deal, if that’s the direction we go at the end of the day. And as far as our next public meeting, it’s, stay tuned until we, we’re close to getting, reaching terms, and I think then we’ll be ready to announce a public meeting, but we don’t have a date yet. Councilmember Naidu.
Thank you, Council President, through you. I just want to make clear, and I think Mr. Spur’s comments may have been muddied in the sense of leaving the impression that there is still not an opportunity for the public to comment on and be involved in the process. Let’s be very clear about this. This process still has multiple opportunities for the public to be involved. It cannot, by law, by how this functions, be done any other way. To give the impression and the implication that somehow the public is shut out or being not involved is absolutely incorrect. Let’s just be clear about all this stuff, okay? Fact of the matter is, in order to get a redevelopment agreement done, it will have to come in front of this body, that is the council, whatever the makeup of it at that point in time is. And that council will have to have an open meeting just like this and have an opportunity for the public to comment on it. The financial terms will be laid out, the design will be laid out, people will know exactly how many units there are, what that composition of those units are, what is the height of the building is, what it will look like, everything. Not only that, it will then have to go to the planning board. The planning board will have to have another public hearing where people will have a second opportunity to have a hearing and have an opportunity to comment. And then maybe it comes back here, I can’t even remember it, but I think that’s how it works, right, Matt?
It does come back.
It comes back here again for a third time. So let’s not play the game, and I’m being serious here, because this is a serious endeavor that has been a bipartisan effort since I started on this council. When Mike McTiernan was president, when I was president, when Marjorie’s been president, we have had bipartisan input towards this project. Why? Because you are right, that it is a significant project. That’s absolutely correct. But we shouldn’t play it as a football and toss it around, because it has real implications. It has real implications financially for this city, it has real implications for the downtown of this city, it has real implications for affordable housing in this city. Those are all significant issues, and those who are aspiring to sit here on this dais should understand that and be, and help the public understand that, but not play it as a football and just toss it around and scare people. It’s not necessary. There is plenty of opportunities for the public to comment on it. Some people will like it, some people will not like it. That’s fair. That’s absolutely fair. Some people will think it’s too big, some people will think it’s too small, some people will think it should have more commercial, some people think it should have more residential. That’s all fair. There are some people who think it should have more environmental issues, and some people who think that it’s fine as it is. We will see where we end up. It’s a city of 22,000. We’re not going to please everybody on every single issue. We’re trying to find a compromise here that financially makes sense, but please, please, we have only a few more days. I know it’s campaign season, I get it, I understand it, but this is too big an issue to do it this way, because whatever we’re left with after this campaign is what people’s impressions are going to be about things, and it’s hard to get people to be less cynical. It’s easy to get people to be cynical, it’s hard to get people to be less cynical. Okay? This is important stuff. People, bipartisan people, previous councils made up of Republicans and Democrats have spent countless, countless hours doing this, and boards, other boards, countless, countless hours of volunteer hours of people putting sweat and time into figuring this out. Let’s not toss this around like this.
Right.
Can I? May I?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
No, I think, just two questions. Council President, through you. So, one, I think what would be helpful So, one, I think what would be helpful is just understanding the groups that were spoken to, if, through that deliberative process, did, were there any changes based on, you know, the group, the YMCA, the HPC, what kind of, when they gave feedback, how did that get worked in? And then just secondarily, I think the big unknown for people is, as you go through that balance of creating a negotiation, I think the community is saying, if there's 140 apartments, is it, are we stuck at 140? Could it be less? I think there's just some questions around how much input can the community put in once that negotiation happens. I think that's also, that's the bigger concern, right? So in fairness, I just, maybe you can talk about that.
Well, I think as far as the latter, there's, you know, the basic, you know, there are some changes that can be made, but, you know, but, but the size of the redevelopment was something that we took many, we had several meetings before we just, before we created the redevelopment plan. And so a lot of the input that we received is embodied in the redevelopment plan. Then we met with redevelopers, with, I think about 13 redevelopers, or before we culled it down and designated the team of two that we're now working with. So we got a lot of input from them about what was doable, what, you know, what made sense, and then we went back with sort of a amalgam of what all the redevelopers told us and tested that with the community. So we've already done that part of it. At this point, the redevelopment plan has, has sort of indicated the size and the scope, you know, so we're, and we've been negotiating that. That is going to be sort of a basic term that is not going to, might go plus or minus five units, but it's not going to change radically. And, you know, because there has to be a development of a certain size to make this work. If, you know, you know, some people say, we want it smaller, but you shrink it down too much, and then it's financially, there's just, there's no point in doing it. You know, there has to be a profit for the redeveloper, there has to be money that comes into us, you know, through the land acquisition and through the pilot or the payments, whatever it ends up, tax payments. There, you know, there are, all of these things are hinge, you know, hinge on each other. So, you know, we're not going to see a major change because those issues have already been discussed. And, you know, I understand there are people who've moved into this community after those discussions have been had, but, you know, this has been many years in the making. It's 2016 when this first started being discussed, so.
Even before then.
2014.
2014, when I said on the planning board.
I stand corrected, 2014. So, I mean, it's taken us seven years to get to this point. We can't go back and revisit all of that, where, you know, we will continue to take input, there will be an opportu, there will be multiple opportunities to weigh in. So, go ahead.
Going back to the master plan, right, so I wasn't involved in 2014, 2015, right? But we started the master plan and we had this couple hundred people at the Elks Club for our first master plan meeting, and people talking about what they wanted. The overwhelming response was more residential walk to town. So that's one of the things we're addressing. Obviously, it's clear that we are looking for some revenue. You have 10 square acres, of which the city owns over 60%, and we get $400,000 a year gross in taxes, of which the city gets 20%. Now, let's just do the math, that's pretty silly, right? And all of us would like to pay less taxes, right? So there is that. But to do it in a very responsible way, that we control and not a developer, we don't sell the land and let them do whatever they want based upon zoning and planning rules, we approach it by this area in need of redevelopment, and that's what gives the city the control. We have taken a very, very open approach to getting community input. There have been lots of opportunities for people to get involved, and not everybody gets involved, and here we are. And we can't just, just because not everybody's involved for six years, doesn't mean we should stop. And we can't revisit now that some people are thinking, wow, now I want to be involved. I don't mean to be harsh, but, you know, democracy is a participatory event, and if you don't participate, so I think that there are lots of good things going, there are plenty more opportunities for people to be able to weigh in. At this point, with the financial piece, it's in a negotiation, and you don't, you don't negotiate in public, it just doesn't, everybody, we're all smart, we know that. So there will be more opportunities. We have taken to heart and thought about some of the things that the various organizations we've spoken to have said, and I'm not going to get into the details at this point, but there's one organization that didn't like what we were doing, and, okay, we understood that and we made a switch. So we are responding in a way, in ways that we think are good for the, but even if an organization, frankly, wanted one thing and we didn't think it was best for the entire community, sorry, you one organization, we're really focused on what's best for the entire community. So.
I just, may I?
Yep.
Okay. So, yeah, and not looking back, because I think that the redevelopment's important to the community, it's important to the town. So I think just looking forward, when we say people are going to have input, I guess the question is, what does that input look like? How much input is it? That's all. So I'm thinking forward, as you go through the negotiation, what, how much input is going to be accessible? If it's limited, it's fine, if it's more, it's good. And, and it's only phase three, right? So is that, I don't know.
Right. I mean.
Yeah.
Right, well, obviously, we're only negotiating on subdivision three right now. So, you know, the other areas, you know, we took the comments that we heard, people expressed concerns, and so we put sub-districts one and two on hold for now to get, focus on sub-district three, because that was the one that had, you know, didn't have a lot of concerns. But, you know, going back, you know, we talked about the grocery store, I think a lot of people who are sitting here today may not realize that the grocery store was something that when we had all those meetings, that was the number one thing that people wanted, was a grocery store. And, you know, so now people are saying, well, I don't want a grocery store, but, you know, we're, you know, that was in the plan because people said they wanted that. So just, you know, just so people understand, you know, we're not pulling these things out of thin air. We, you know, everything that's in that redevelopment plan came from the community and what the community said they wanted. I mean, we, all of those, so when you say, where can we find this information? It's all in that redevelopment plan, which you can find on the city's website. And I would urge anyone who hasn't read it to go and read it, because there's a lot of really good stuff in there, and it, you know, it's a really good explanation of the process and, and, you know, sort of what information was gathered, okay?
Can I just, I'm sorry, not to belabor this, but I just want to, and I will belabor it then. But that's typical of me, come on, you guys know that by now. But I think, I think what I would say to Councilwoman Allen's question, and just generally, is the fact that this entire process is an iterative process, and we learn through what people are saying to us. Like Council President Fox said, I mean, we heard the comments in May, we all did. We understand where people were getting concerned about, what they were concerned about, and then we reacted to that. Similarly, part of what I think is, because you're not seeing everything, everybody's not seeing it, because we can't do it, look, we'd all love to. I honestly think if the administrator, all of us who have been in the subcommittee, could have had meetings in September, in August, September, whatever, and given you as, you know, had a deal and had things available, we would have done it. But what we can't do either is, for the sake of an arbitrary date, because of, either because of election, end of year, whatever you want to pick as a date, say, okay, we're going to race through because we're going to then give the other side an advantage. We're not willing to do that, we're not willing to negotiate by arbitrarily putting a gun to our heads and saying, hey, listen, we need to get a deal done by X number of days, and they know that. So I'd rather us have, take the hit of having people say, why can't you tell me more, why can't you tell me more, than getting a bad deal. I've said here before, multiple times, I mean, I do deal work as part of my professional life, until you have all the components of a deal done, you don't have a deal done. We don't have all the components of the deal done yet. Until we have that, and then when we can go show it to the public, then we'll get the input, and the public thinks it's a bad deal still, we can either defend it and say, this is the best we could come up with, or the public will say, no, that's still too bad, and then the members here will have to vote on whether or not it's workable. They'll have to listen to their constituents, and that's how it works. That's democracy, that's the participatory part of the element. And the last thing I will say, I was here in 2014, sitting on the dais, but in the planning board dais, I was sitting next to then-mayor Ellen Dixon, and we started at that point in time, looking at the parcel behind the post office lot. So I know what it, I've been involved in this now for, you know, I don't know how many years now, eight years, almost. That's a long time, and we had the same discussions about what should happen here, how should this look? And part of the reason we ended up looking at it in broader scope is because we were looking at that individual parcel, and that became hard to figure out how the rest of it all would fit together. And that's why we went through with the master plan and then, then to this kind of overall larger development process. There's a lot of history here that goes on behind the scenes. Thank you, I apologize.
One more sentence. Just one. I've lived in, I don't know how many of you have lived in this town for almost 35 years the way I have. The community has been talking about the Broad Street redevelopment for at least four years, and, and it hasn't happened because everybody has been afraid to make the choices, the decisions that might not satisfy everybody. We're not going to satisfy everybody. But it's time to move forward and make a decision and do the hard work. It's six years, I really was hoping this would take three or four years. Well, I was pretty naive. I mean, it's going to take eight to 10 years, but you need to put the hard work in, and everybody up here and many other planning boards, the planning board, the zoning board, the planning board have done a lot of work, and other people in this town have worked really hard to make sure this happens. You have to have the courage of your convictions to take some bold steps, to make some decisions to move forward, and that's part of the history. I'm done.
Okay. So I think with that, we should probably move on to the regular part of the agenda. Do we have any other comments?
Do we respond to this?
Which one?
This is, I guess.
Yes, yeah, I put that one with Mr. Fosgate's comments, because they were basically the same questions. Okay, so with that, we're moving on to resolutions now. So, Councilmember Barton, it's your turn.
Well, thank you, Council President. This is resolution number 9205, and every year, the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs requires each municipality to participate in the Best Practice Inventory Program and certify the occurrence of a public meeting. So there are two sections. The first, that is scored, and a municipality must reach a minimum point threshold in order to receive state aid. So I'm proud to report that we have again exceeded this threshold and will receive 100% of the state aid for which we are eligible. Many thanks to Tammy Baldwin, our CFO, for her work on this, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, moving on. Finance number two, Councilmember Barton.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution number 9213. This resolution appoints a deputy tax collector. As per our closed session discussion, we are appointing Lydia Blythe to the City of Summit's excellent tax collection office. As a current tax collector in a smaller municipality, Ms. Blythe brings considerable experience, and we welcome her to the city on the hill. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to capital projects and community services. Councilmember Little, would you like to do cap number one, please?
Thank you, Council President. Capital projects number one is number 9206, and this is to authorize installation of fencing at Reeves Reed Arboretum. The arboretum leases their land from the city, and they have come to us recently and asked us to replace the fencing because they are having difficulty with deer control in recent years, and they need to put up more expensive fencing in order to deal with this problem. So they've asked us for permission to do that, and we, so I would like to approve this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council?
Just so it's clear, the fencing is going to be paid by Reeves Reed Arboretum, it's just because of the lease arrangement that we have with them, we have to go through this process of having a resolution, otherwise they'll take care of the acquisition cost for the fencing.
Okay. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, capital projects number two, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. Number two is the rule number 9155, and this is to establish a summit free market steering committee and appoint the members. As you know, the free market has been operating in its building, it's been doing very well, and it's time to adopt a steering committee that would do it rather than volunteer organization that's been, been doing it in, up to this point. It's starting to have some technical difficulties. We are going to be espousing a committee comprised of the following members, three community at large members, we discussed this in closed session, and these will be Christine Lejoy, Christopher Harrison, and David Story, a DCS representative, who will be Jim Blades, and then representative members from the following organizations, the Summit High School, and that member will be Sophie Mallon, Summit Conservancy trustee, that will be Diane Langworthy, an environmental commission representative, this will be Mimi Zukov, recycling advisory committee representative, that is to be determined, that position is not going to be filled tonight, and a council liaison, who will be Daniel Sullivan. So this advisory committee will oversee the running of the free market, and this will be a very active board, who will be very involved in the day-to-day runnings of the free market. All these members that we are appointing have been involved, been involved in some significant way with the free market up to this point, and we are really happy that they've agreed to serve on this board. I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Naidin.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, thank you to all these people who are willing to volunteer their time. Just so folks understand how we, why we've created this, obviously, this is a building that is used extensively by members of the public, and it is run by volunteers. There's been some folks who are retiring who were previously involved in this, including Amy Karens here, who has been spearheading and done an excellent job, and of course, it's been run by student volunteers from Summit High School. The purpose of this committee is to formalize that, give also an opportunity for other members of the public to start getting involved through the committee, to attend committee meetings, to know about the building, and this organ, this group will help to run it, to figure out times and so forth, and that's why we have people here who have expertise and knowledge about the free market, and it's very helpful that all these people are willing to volunteer their time, so that's my comments, thanks.
Okay, any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to capital projects number three.
I would like to say, please, resolution number 920, and it's to reject bids and authorize the new advertisement for bids on the Hobart Avenue sidewalk project. This is the sidewalk project that is leading up to Reeves Reed Arboretum again, and there were some concerns raised about the scope of the project and how it was laid out. We are reviewing that project and trying to figure out what will work best, but any changes in the, in the design of the project will, would result in significant changes to the bids that were advertised, and therefore, we're going to ask to reject those bids and will authorize a new advertisement when the project is finalized. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? So I think you had a comment, would you like to come up?
I did, I showed my card early, didn't I?
That's okay, that's the way I can remind you.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Pascal Lalonde, L-A-L-O-N-D-E. My address is 78 Hobart Avenue, and I have just a few words in my capacity, first as president of the Board of Trustees of Reeves Reed Arboretum, and then also as a father of three little kids who love to walk, bike, scooter, stroller to the arboretum all the time, we've done the walk at least 100 times. So I'd first like to thank you for your attention and focus on this matter. It's a critical safety issue from our perspective. Just this past Sunday, we had our very popular Celebrate Fall event, we had over 900 visitors show up, residents, people driving to the arboretum, walking. Cars were parked all the way down from the arboretum to Witch Ridge, and some passed, which is, which is great for the City of Summit, it's great for the arboretum, but it's an accident waiting to happen. When I was walking up to the arboretum, it was around noon, I encountered at least three families. families with strollers on Hobart Avenue. So picture Hobart Avenue on a busy day. There are cars all the way down one side of the street. Between Hobart Road and the arboretum, there's a stone gravel sidewalk. But if you have a stroller, that's not accessible. You cannot, I've tried, you cannot push a stroller on that. It's like pushing a stroller through oatmeal. And so there are people walking up or walking down from the arboretum, there's a car coming through. It works with one car, the car moves plenty over, but at some point, it's going to happen where two cars are coming through and there's someone in the road. It's frightening. And I, just from a personal level, like I said, I've done that walk with my little kids many times. My kids can't ride their bikes on that stone gravel sidewalk. It just doesn't work for little kids. So we're forced into the street or just to walk our bikes up. And so, again, thank you for your focus in providing a safe passageway up to the arboretum. It's a very popular resource. We have tens of thousands of visitors every year, but it, again, it's an accident waiting to happen. And as we, as you all look through the next iteration of the project and think about what the right solution is to address all the needs and concerns, I just hope you all continue to put emphasis on this and getting this done as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaLonde. Were there any other comments from members of the public, members of council? Thank you for taking the time to talk to us about that. I think with that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we'll now move on to capital projects number four. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution number 9171, and this is to request an agreement with the county of Union to implement installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons on county roads at various locations. So this, these are the pedestrian crossing beacons that have been installed successfully in other parts of the city. We've had many requests from residents to the safety committee and the capital projects committee for these beacons. Because there are several locations where requests have been made on county roads, we are grouping all these, asking the county to approve, to forgive us, to look at installing these beacons in these places. This does not mean these beacons will be installed, it just means that we will be able to look at these locations and assess whether a beacon would be appropriate there. But we're doing this all at once, scheduling it at the county, one by one, and looking at all the locations where we might want to install beacons. So if we do an assessment and it's determined that a beacon is necessary there, there will be another process that goes forward to approve it. So this is the resolution to request an agreement with the county to implement installations of pedestrian beacons on county roads, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President Fox. I know this is about investigating them, but I was wondering what is being done about making sure that they work? Because we have issues sometimes with them not working, and I know the county is responsible for that, and so I just don't know.
Actually, we're, once we install them, we install, and we are responsible. Is there, I don't know, Director Schreger, do you have something that you can say about making sure the beacons work?
Thank you. Through you, Council President. Public Works does go out and check them monthly. This is a time of year the solar powered ones may have some issues if the batteries are getting older. So we do ask the public, anyone, to report them if they're not functioning them, just because we could inspect it on a Monday, and if it's not working on a Tuesday, we just need to know. But it will fall upon the city, whether it's on a county road or if it's a city road, so it would fall on us. And we do check them. And you will get seven to 10 years out of the battery, and then they do need replacing them, just the battery, not the whole unit, so.
And that can go through C Click Fix, the report of concern feature on the city website, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you. That was exactly what we wanted, to encourage the public to report those that don't work.
Okay. Councilmember Allen.
Oh, thank you, Council President. I don't know if Madam Clerk has an email on this.
We're going to do that afterward. This is, I'm taking council questions.
All right, I'm going to say, one, would there be an opportunity to potentially change the look of the beacons, the way that the signs look? Because they're, and I don't mean this to be disrespectful, they're very, they're not very nice looking, so they don't tie into the environment all that well. So I don't know if there's a possibility for the aesthetics on them? And two, in terms of, once the beacons are considered to be installed, do we talk to neighbors first? Like, what's the process of ensuring that the community knows there might be a beacon near them? Because they're flashing lights. And I assume there would be four, you know, because I don't know how many you would install, but.
Not four generally, but. Director Schreger, you want to?
And the only reason I say that is on Maple Street, there's like six, there's three on each side in a row on Maple Street, so.
Maple in what?
And Union.
Union.
So that's a commercial area?
Yeah, but I don't know why there's six of them, all in one little area, and they're unattractive. Like, they don't match any of our poles. Like, we have nice poles downtown, and then you have these silver things, so.
Through you, Council President.
Yes, go ahead.
So aesthetically, let's start, the basics of it, the sign, color of the sign, the diagram, the shape, the angle, the lights, that's all standardized, so that cannot change. That's governed by the, what we call the MUTCD, which is the federal guidelines for roadside signage. In terms of making it more decorative, I could share that there is the system at Broad and Elm is the more decorative system, will increase cost. I believe that one was, like, at least three times the price of the standard ones that we do have, put up, if not four times. They do get very costly. So there is an opportunity that we definitely could investigate, or at least consider that as an option, but it's usually pretty significant. But it doesn't change the color or anything of the actual function of the sign, so, in that regard. In terms of, I mean, typically, we don't have much public involvement if it's a safety improvement, much like a stop sign, if it's deemed necessary. That's, so we don't have a big history of them going in a highly residential area. So since this, these locations do, we will absolutely reach out to them and seek some input, but ultimately, if it's deemed necessary there, we'll have to go there. We can work on locations some, but it has to be within a certain distance of the crosswalk, so we don't have much flexibility in regards to that. But we could definitely do outreach as some of these get more residential, but there's not too much flexibility, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm assuming we need Aaron still.
Yeah, you might as well just. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. So my understanding is that the warrant process is complete for at least some of these, right? So given approval from the county, which of these seven would we be installing immediately? If given approval?
We've got a list here.
Right. That hasn't been, so the first part is going to the county, they might reject all of those.
Sure.
So that, there will be some process of elimination. Once it does come back, it would go back through Capital Projects and Safety Committee to assess which ones. We will apply or have applied for grants in the past, so possibly we could do all at once if we do receive that grant. Otherwise, it would be, I don't want to say case by case, but once we see which ones are approved, and then we could evaluate which one has the highest traffic of pedestrians, any crash history, items like that. So they're not in any sort of preference order with.
Right. But just to be clear, they all meet the warrants for.
Correct.
Okay. Understood. And I just want to say, when speaking with people about what is important to them, it's the safety. And when they are walking, these help draw attention to people in the crosswalk. So you are supposed to be able to see them, and I am very much in support of us moving forward with this request. So thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Nigel.
Oh, let Councilman O'Sullivan.
Go ahead. Yeah, I just saw your head first.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we all know, we have our share of difficult intersections in Summit, and where there's no traffic light. And we don't want more traffic lights where we're stopping traffic. These are vital for both the driver and the pedestrian. I feel safer. I use one almost every day when I'm walking to town. You know, there's a blind curb near where I live. These are, these are great, and I feel good when I see them behind the wheel of my car as well. So I'm in favor of this.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember O'Sullivan. Councilmember Nigel.
I will concur exactly with what Councilman O'Sullivan said. So before, there wasn't one on Broad Street, and those of us who took the train and would have to cross over Broad Street, over two lanes of traffic going on opposite sides and cars, no cars wanting to stop for us, that was dangerous. This is much better to have that. My son gets dropped off on Elm Street with his friends to go crossing into the middle school. There's off course of crossing guard, but it makes a huge difference to have this light go on. And I know, for instance, I've driven on Springfield, and there isn't one by Pine Grove, and I've seen kids try to cross over there at different times with bikes and things like that. So, you know, sometimes people wonder, why is all of this going up? What's going on with it? But there is reasons for not only just pedestrian safeties, but some of these are routes that kids take as part of their school routes to get to school there. This is the way that they typically go to get to a playground, from a playground to a school, to home, or whatever. And cars nowadays just seem like they just want to go flying everywhere, you know? And we can speak here endlessly about that people need to slow down, the police can try to do stops, we can put up signs that say, but one of the things that these do, especially now, you know, in wintertime, we're getting to wintertime where at 6 o'clock it gets dark, is people see those lights, and it, yeah, it may not be the most attractive thing, but it gets their attention. And that's what you're trying to do primarily, get their attention. So, yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Council President, I just want to say, to be clear, I'm not against doing the beacon. I think they're helpful, because I would love one on Pine Grove. I'm just saying that there was an email where, once you start getting into the residential areas, then some of the light noise, that's all I'm concerned about.
And Director Schreger did say that there would be, you know, contact with neighbors when it was in residential areas. I think we'll go ahead and let Madam Clerk read the comment from Christina Amundson.
So yes, this email was received from Christina Amundson, and she lives at Larned Road. And she writes, "Please, I am writing to express my concerns and those of my family about the impending installation of rapid flashing beacons in our city. One of the intersections involved in the proposed installation of the rapid flashing beacon installation is the corner of Mountain and Larned, where I live. I do not know exactly where the intersection, this flashing beacon would be installed, what the beacon will look like, and what the hours it will operate, but I am disappointed that no prior notice was given to those of us living in the affected intersection. At least, we didn't get any. I only discovered that a resolution about it was up for a vote because I plowed through the attachments, including the lengthy Police Department manual for tonight's agenda. The resolution notes the intersections, but does not include any details about the beacons themselves. Here's the crux of my concern: flashing lights trigger my migraines and my niece's epileptic seizures. Consequently, flashing lights have an adverse effect on my health and my quality of life. Whenever a police vehicle with flashing lights has been posted at the intersection, I have asked them to park their vehicles so that the lights are not visible through my windows. Additionally, I have to shutter all the windows so that the lights don't flash inside the house. Since I live on the corner, I see the flashing lights from almost my entire first story. I am not aware that a pedestrian safety study has been conducted identifying this particular intersection as needing the lights. The intersection already has stop signs and during school crossing times, a crossing guard. Are these flashing lights absolutely necessary? They are adversely affecting my family's quality of life and do not seem to be needed. Most pedestrian traffic on the intersection occurs during the daylight when the lights are less visible. I wonder how many of you like to have a flashing beacon outside of your home, potentially flashing in through your windows all day and all night? This is particularly difficult to accept at a time when, due to the pandemic, we are all spending more time in our homes. Consequently, I ask that you table this resolution until such time as you have helped the affected neighbors better understand, comment on, and can potentially shape exactly what we will be facing. I reached out to my ward representatives on council as soon as I saw the resolution: Marjorie Fox and Lisa Allen, as well as Susan Hairston, who were listed on the resolution. Marjorie Fox reached out over the weekend and promised to talk to Aaron Schreger to find out more details. I know that our council members have to balance the work of multiple committees and their personal lives, but this is going up for a vote tonight, and I still haven't heard back with the details about the beacons. While I may hear after noon today, I do not want to miss the opportunity to raise my concerns so that all council members may hear them before voting." Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think we've addressed a good amount of what Ms. Amundson has expressed concerns about. My understanding, and let me just make sure I understand, Mr. Schreger, but I, once we hear back from the county, there, anything that's in a residential area, there will be contact with the residents.
Correct.
About placement and ways to make it as palatable as possible. And that there already have been studies about the safety needs in these areas.
Yes, correct. They meet that. And one thing, just to clarify, they are pedestrian activated, so I can't tell based on what Ms. Amundson wrote, if she felt they might be flashing all night. They could if someone's hitting the button, but it is just when the button is hit, so.
Right.
Some of the older beacons that were there did flash continuously through the night or during school hours, so.
And these are visible during the day, too? Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's really going to be mostly probably school drop-off and pickup times?
Correct, at that location.
And that intersection, you know, I understand Ms. Amundson's concern, but at the same time, that intersection is quite an interesting one with all those roads coming together at once. So, you know, I think we obviously have to balance all of the needs, so.
Correct.
But I think, I think that we can reassure Ms. Amundson that there is a process and that this is not the end of the road as far as discussing this issue.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I think we're ready, unless anyone else has a comment, for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we're moving on to capital projects number five.
Thank you, Council President. Number five is resolution number 9183, and this is to authorize a change order for a final, on the 2021 micropaying project. This is my favorite kind of resolution because, given the actual quantities during the project, the final number is decreasing the original contract by almost $60,000, $49,608.45. So I enthusiastically ask for approval for this resolution.
And I enthusiastically second it.
Okay, any comments? All right, any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we have one more of your favorite type of resolutions. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. Another one of my favorite resolutions is number six. Number 9182 is to authorize a speeding order in final on the Summit State Street. The transit project, not quite, is an exciting resolution, but this, due to the actual quantities that we used during the project, the order was decreased by $520. So I would also ask that we approve this resolution.
And I second it.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So Councilmember O'Sullivan, would you like to take the next resolution, please?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9202, to authorize submission of recreation opportunities for individuals with disabilities, or a Roy Grant for 2021, 2022, grant application and acceptance. It is possible that there is $19,500 in grant money available from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs that would fund recreational activities for individuals with special needs, with a particular focus on programs that increase inclusion in the Summit community, new virtual programs, and programs for individuals over the age of 18 for the fiscal year that runs through June of 2022. The Roy Grant requires a 20% local match that is covered by registration fees and collaboration membership fees, which means no taxpayer money is allocated to this application. In 2010, our DCP received the first grant of $13,500 to help the DCP and TRICAN jumpstart the program and begin to turn it into the award-winning regional program that it, it has become. Due to the program's success, the collaboration now includes 13 member towns that pay an annual fee to our DCP. This allows us to continue to expand our capacity as well as continue to train a talented pool of peer mentors who assist teachers, coaches, and students across the programs. In the spirit of shared services and the pay-it-forward attitude of the program, our towns, our own DCP's efforts have been recognized as an example of how neighboring communities can creatively share resources in meeting the needs of these children and their families. And I ask that we adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? I'd like to commend the DCP for this program. This is a great program that, that helps a lot of kids and also teaches a lot of kids how to be mentors and friends to disabled members of our community. So it creates inclusion, it, it creates a sense of community. There's some really wonderful volunteers, both kids and coaches, who get involved in this process. And this is really one of the best programs, I think, that we have in Summit, and we, we should all be really proud of what, what it's grown into. It started out just being Summit, and it's now. How many kids do we have?
There's about 13 different towns that are involved.
And how, do we know how many kids, or we don't even know? A lot?
Don't even know.
Yeah, but it's a great program.
It's a lot.
Yep.
Every day, we've got activities going on for these kids. You know, as you said, it's not even the kids with the disabilities, but everybody else that's involved, the teachers, the peer mentors, and everything, so it's wonderful.
Yep, thank you. So, Councilmember Little.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate what Director Ozdrowski and Councilmember O'Sullivan said. My own, my own son participated in TRICAN as a mentor for many years. It was, you know, he got more out of the program than many of the kids that were enrolled in the program. So this is, these are just amazing. And there's so many different TRICAN programs. There's sports, there's play, there's interactive, there's mentoring. I mean, it really touches so many, so many aspects of kids' lives, and these programs are just really beneficial to everyone in the community. And this is, this is just a jewel in Summit's crown that we host these programs in our Community Programs Department. So, you know, we can't, can't be enthusiastic enough about this, these grants and this program.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Little. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Any comments from the public? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're now moving on to the consent agenda. We usually take that as a whole unless there's anything that anyone would like to pull out and discuss separately. So if not, can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and now we're moving on to an item for discussion, action, or referral. We have a Community Programs and Parking Services request that I will, I'll turn over to Councilmember O'Sullivan to just introduce the issue, and then we can discuss it.
Yep, just one second. So for the last number of years, there has been a framework in place for an agreement to have free holiday parking in the CRBD, excuse me. And usually, it ends up being 11 or 12-meter days. This year, the dates for free holiday parking are from Saturday, December 11th, through Sunday, December 26th. Free parking for shoppers will be located at all 90-minute meters, the Bank Street Lot, and the ground floor of the Tier Garage. But it excludes the de-forest lots. Times will be enforced at all locations to encourage turnover of spaces. What I also want you to know is that, and I just found this out recently, is that since about 2014 or 2015, we have had free parking over Thanksgiving weekend. And that ends up being just the Friday and Saturday. But it's a better deal because it's the 90-minute meters, the Bank Street Lot, the ground floor of the Tier Garage, and includes the three de-forest lots. So I guess the point is that the city and council has been extremely supportive of our local businesses over a number of years. I think we're all in agreement that even though we're sacrificing revenue, that is a smart and prudent thing to do. But I also want to know that the benefits, that this benefits the shoppers that we're targeting, and I don't know how we measure that. I don't even know if there's a way to quantify that or if SDI could provide data to council. Because that's what we're trying to do. It's just attract more shoppers. They come, they eat at our restaurants. It, it's a benefit for everyone. So I don't know what SDI needs to provide more to us or be more transparent about their marketing and their advertising initiatives. So I would just open that up for a discussion if we can.
Do I have any comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Vartan.
Sure. So thank you, Council President. So first, I think it's helpful to have a little bit of history about this issue, but also just to clarify the conversation that we're having, right? So first is, we will have free holiday parking this year, correct? We're, that's done.
We're, we're pretty much in agreement on that.
Okay, good. So if we have to vote on something to that effect, I would move that we do that now. But then, as a secondary piece to that, I think it is budget season for everybody, right? And it's budget season for SDI as well. And I think it's important to point out that this, the downtown is a special improvement district, meaning the taxes that are collected from the downtown do not come into city revenue. They are reinvested back into the downtown in the group, in the form of a group called Summit Downtown, Inc. And the group is managed by a couple of people, and they are responsible for marketing and promoting the downtown and hosting events and putting up the lights and helping us to craft policy and do all of these things that we did over the last, especially, year and a half to help make sure that the businesses were healthy and thriving through the pandemic. So when I was Chair of the Parking Services Committee in 2019 and serving with Matt Gould, we got SDI to commit to returning a little bit of revenue, $3,000, I think was the agreement in 2019, to offset a little bit the loss of revenue from the Parking Authority that results from this free holiday parking. So I think if we're talking about the future of free holiday parking, I would love to not be doing it every year in October. But also, I think we should try to put in place a framework now that basically says, okay, we've got this $3,000, that's great. I think moving forward, a modest annual increase of some small percentage would be helpful in order to continue to make sure that SDI has skin in the game and that this makes sense for everybody that's involved in it. You know, the, the shoppers, obviously, that we want to draw into the downtown, but that it makes, also makes sense for the business and that we're getting the people who we want, the shoppers, to be parking in these free spaces and not the employees of the downtown. So that's my contribution to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Does anyone else, Councilmember Naiden?
Thank you, Council President. I, I concur with Councilman Vartan. I, I have a long time think that we should resolve this issue and not have this as an annual issue come up again and again. It, to me, doesn't make any sense. We should have free parking during the holiday period of time. We should have it during Thanksgiving. We should have it during the holiday period of time. Other towns have it, other towns have free parking throughout the year. So, and those are our neighboring towns and competitors for people. I think, and I was actually at an SDI budget meeting this morning. I think, to pick up on where Councilman Vartan left off, I think what, what we could do is simply this, is set the baseline at the $3,000 and have it adjusted every year based upon the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. And simply resolve it that way and have the dates being two weeks before the December 26th, and therefore, you know when you're going to start every single year. And nobody has to keep on trying to figure this out every year, what's going on. Get this over with. That's my point.
And I, can I, to your, your question, Councilman O'Sullivan, we have tried to get SDI, to get the merchants to let us know what's the impact of the free parking, and it, it's, it's a no-go. The merchants are so busy selling and doing the retail work that they're not asking their buyers, did you park for free? Was it good for you today? No. And, and we've asked for, now, six years that I know of. So that's just, that's not going to happen. But I think we commit to 3,000, I agree with you 100%. CPI adjustment once a year, and let's, let's be done with this. When I saw this, I thought, really? I thought we did this.
I thought the same thing. That's exactly what I thought. I thought we had done this.
Right. Okay, are there any other comments? So I think.
I, I would just, well, I would just push back on that. I would say, I don't mind, I don't mind doing this every year, and I don't want to make a decision that's going to tie the hands of a future council. Maybe things change, maybe times change. So I would just say, it's not that big a deal to approve this resolution every year and to have them come and ask for it.
I, I actually, I think, agree with Councilmember O'Sullivan, although I would advocate that we do this, like, with the budget, with, with SDI's budget in June rather than later on.
Yeah.
And, did you have something?
Actually, yeah, no, I agree with that. That's what I was going to say. And I was going to say, the second comment would be the free parking, how would you distinguish if employees are parking there? Could they validate? Just throwing out an idea. Is there a way to validate so when someone is shopping, that they turn in a ticket and it's validated so that employees can't park in the free parking arbitrarily? So just put that out.
That's going to be a hard thing to enforce, is my sense. It's, it's a good idea, but I don't know practically.
If we could, I mean, because, because we've had this discussion so many years in a row, right? So all of these ideas have been tried. I think that the bottom line is, we have to defer to those who are in the best position to know whether this is something that's useful for them or not. And those are the downtown merchants. And every year, they come back saying, this is what we want. So presumably, they've done their own determination that this actually is helpful. And so I think, and, and us trying to tinker with it, trying to figure it out is, it's like a Rubik's Cube. It's just not, we're not going to be able to do it. We're not going to be able, and we should just accept what we can and cannot do. That, that's just my opinion. And I, I'll push back on my colleagues. I really do think there's some, some things that it's good to have certainty over. There's lots of things that we vote on that bind future councils over. That's how we do stuff. There's lots of stuff we do. Firehouse, exactly. What are we going to do? The next council comes up, they're going to say in the middle, okay, you're halfway through the building. We're going to stop right now, we're not going to do that. That's not, you know, we can get to, and, and if it drastically changes, I'm sure somebody else will say, you know what, the entire situation's changed. This is not like as if we're, you know, absolutely, in comparison to the firehouse, we're not building a building, right? Things can change. But I just think the certainty allows us everyone to plan, and they get to budget it. They know what the number is going forward. We know what to expect. The expectations change as far as, then you can plan in the beginning of the year what your, what your promotions are, how are you going to do those things? We're sitting here in October, talking about something that's going to happen in a couple of weeks' time. Really, that's not, in November, we're talking Thanksgiving and then the next.
Well, Thanksgiving is already set, that's a related point. But also, it lets the merchants know, lets them know that they can start. I mean, I, I did a bunch of shopping at the toy professor yesterday for my grandkids, and he, he could have been able to say to me, there's going to be free parking, and, and if he knew, for sure. And why not? Everybody keeps talking about the supply chain issues, you got to get out there.
So can I just add one more thing? I think this sort of arrangement, where we're talking about this every year, right, is a remnant, perhaps, of a sort of more adversarial relationship with SDI.
Yes, absolutely.
And now, we, we're all on the same team, and we, and we recognize that, I think, and, and we work together quite collaboratively. So I think we should not view this so adversarially, and we should just say, yeah, look, we're partners. We want to have free parking, let's just do it. You know, let's just get it done and, and not have to be, not have to be worrying about it. So, thank you.
Are there any members of the public who wanted to comment? Come on up. Mr. Miniger.
Andy Miniger, 15 Edgar Street. I didn't know I was going to be able to comment during this section. So I wanted to know if there's any.
You're Council President.
I can, I can say what I want, sure. Come on up and comment.
The, is there any possibility of talking to Park Mobile? Because now there's Park Mobile on all of these. If they would work with the businesses to try to find the data that you're looking for, proof that somebody used free parking here. For example, they, they just log in, or they, they basically say, yes, I'm parking here through the Park Mobile app, and then get some type of a code on their receipt that gives them a credit through Park Mobile.
That's a good, that's an interesting thought.
Yep.
Thank you.
I have no idea. It's worth the ask.
It is, that's interesting.
Councilmember O'Sullivan, will you bring that back, please?
It's worth an ask.
Yes, exactly.
Well, and to just add to that, I think Park Mobile already does promote that there's free parking available. So like, Park Mobile actually will send a notification that there is free parking available. The question from Mr. Miniger about what you can do with that data on the backend from Park Mobile is an interesting one. So I think it's worth exploring.
Worth an ask.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Little, in answer to your question, there is, they, they do have a license plate reader when they do enforcement, so.
That's talking to Alan.
Sorry.
You're, you're looking at her, talking to her.
Little spot, so sorry, Councilmember Allen. In answer to your question of the parking, the parking enforcement people have license plate readers, and they have a pretty good idea of who the employees are that are the repeat offenders. And they will be.
And they have permits, downtown permits.
Yes, well, or some of them don't, but they know those plates. They've kind of figured out who it is. So my point is that there, there will be enforcement if we do this. So I think the best thing to do is to, to plan on having the resolution at the next council meeting. And I think I'm now, after hearing the arguments, I think I'm comfortable saying, let's just get this over with once and for all. But, you know, obviously, we can have an option A and an option B, a vote on them.
I would ask the question, if you want to do something permanent, would that be an ordinance?
Ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, let's go for the ordinance.
Well, so, so let's do, let's, can we do a resolution this year and then in the spring do an ordinance? Yeah, we shouldn't do it, we shouldn't make the way for an ordinance.
So you can, and you went by the tie-in with your budget with SDI, you do an ordinance, and then you have a permanent ordinance with the CPI tied in.
But you could, you could, Matt, right? Do a resolution next council meeting and then set up the ordinance so that the ordinance is effective in 2022 and thereafter.
You could do that, but you just need to have a first and second reading.
In, in 2021.
Right, but we, but we can do a resolution to get them started now.
You could, you could get the resolution done for, for, for the immediate, but you could also do the ordinance this year.
Let's, let's just do that. Can we do both? I think that makes the most sense, don't we? Then we don't have to have this conversation again in the spring. Okay, so with that, I think we, is there any council members, any council members have comments or new business?
Yes.
Yes, three things, Councilmember Vartan?
You guessed it. So, thank you, Council President. The municipal budget process is beginning, and as an individual member of council, I have reached out to some department heads and colleagues to lobby for some priorities for the future behind the scenes. However, it's important to me that I be on the record publicly about them as well. I want to highlight three. So the first one is, on the operating side of the budget, the city must start paying our interns. In high school and college, I would have loved to work as an intern in City Hall. But I needed to make money over the summer, and working any less than full-time was not an option. So right now, it requires tremendous privilege to afford not to be paid as one of our interns. We can easily correct this with a very modest amount of money, funded by breakage in salary and benefits costs from retiring members of City Hall staff. So that's number one. Number two is, the second is continuing to push forward on sidewalk installation, but distributing our investment more equitably across the city. I think our next priorities for adding sidewalks should be Glenside Avenue, Baltisral Road, and Mountain Avenue. I understand these are also all-county roads, but I believe it would be worth the investment to improve safety on these important school routes and major connective roadways. The third is solar power. We need to invest immediately in some solar infrastructure. The pool parking lot makes a lot of sense in my head. And while I think it would be easy to make a case to wait and try to figure out if there's going to be state funding available or other funds available, I think we should not wait. I think we need to begin the process of exploring a solar-powered microgrid, and I think that will help increase our resilience as well.